Okay, we just have a short, formal schedule here before we take our tour for the day. Could we get a motion on adoption of the resolutions?
Mr. Chair, I think we need separate motions. There are some extensions.
Oh, okay. Treville parcel and building B site plan.
Move approval?
Commissioner Rubin, you are the one person who probably should not be voting on that one.
Okay, well, I'm going to...
Okay, well, I'm going to defer.
I'll move for approval.
Jerry Sushi second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed and one abstention.
Yes.
With Commissioner Rubin.
Abstain.
Great. Iglesias Vida Nueva Preliminary Plan.
Move for approval.
Jerry Sushi second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? That is approved.
Abstain.
And one abstention. What about the minutes from March 24th to April 21st and April 28th?
Move for approval.
Mr. Vermae, you should not be voting on that.
Jerry Sushi.
Yeah, we need to separate them, share.
All right.
Was I out?
According to my information, you were out on that day.
I don't remember him being.
Which day?
March 24th.
Okay, I don't remember being out, but.
I don't remember you being out. I'm just going on what's in front of me.
Got it.
Okay. All right, so could we get a motion for the minutes of March 24th?
Aye, move approval.
Jerry Sushi second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? That is approved with one abstention, April 21st and April 28th.
Chair, those need to be separated as well.
Okay, April 21st.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved and April 28th.
Move approval.
Second.
Sorry, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Patterson, I abstain.
And one abstention. Okay. The extension request for Wisteria Business Park Preliminary Plan and Lidl Germantown Site Plan.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That's approved. Lot 23 Willerburn Acres Administrative Subdivision Regulatory Extension Request.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? That's approved. King's Crossing Preliminary Plan Regulatory Extension Request.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? That is approved unanimously, which brings us to the Park Director's Report.
Good man there, Keith Strachan.
Good morning, Planning Board. It's good to be with you again. I have some nice pictures to show you, but just a couple announcements before I get into the photo. If you could pull up my screen, please. So, the operating budget is pretty much wrapped up. It's a good outcome at the end for us. It'll be the first time in many years, definitely the first time since I've been the Director of the Parks Department, that our operating budget will be fully funded. Our request will be fully funded without having depend on the council restoring a significant amount of money through reconciliation on the last day of the budget. As you recall, we didn't have as big of a gap to fill this year that we had in prior years, and what we were asking the council to restore was about, was a quarter million dollars. And what they did, instead of putting that money on the reconciliation list and having to come up with the extra revenue, they recognized that we had some additional salary lapse savings through a high number of vacancies in the current year, and they recommended that we use that money to prepay some items in next year's budget so that they would not have to come up with the new revenue for that $250,000. So, the good news is that means those items that normally would have competed up to the last day are now funded, and they did put actually $100,000 on the reconciliation list for an item to support our athletic field program called the Nutrient Management Program for Park Fields. And there was enough discussion about that and enthusiasm about supporting that program that I'm hopeful that even that money will be restored. And if so, we'll end up, for the first time ever, with an operating budget that's actually a little bit more than we sent up to Rockville, which would be a great outcome. They did have considerable discussion about the high number of vacancies in the agency. Of course, that's not unique to us. That's around the whole country in government and in private sector. So, I just want to assure the board that we have been and will continue to be redoubling our efforts to make sure that our recruitment and selection and filling of vacancies is a top priority for all managers all the time from now going forward. And we are already seeing the number, the percentage of vacancies start to tick down a little bit, which is good news. There is the Bi-County Meeting on the Budget this afternoon between the two county councils, not the planning boards, but the two councils will meet. I imagine that will be a five-minute meeting. I don't think there's any issues of substance. I'm not aware of any on the Montgomery side, and I haven't heard of any on the Prince George's side, so I'm sure that'll just be a lot of collegiality, I hope, and it'll, that'll pretty much wrap up the operating budget until the resolutions are done in a few weeks. The capital budget is still a little bit unsettled. We know that there is a significant overbooking of the capital budget. What we've communicated to council and council staff is if that we're going to be trimmed anywhere, just please make sure that we're involved in the discussion as to where that would happen, not to be determined by council staff without our awareness. And I think we've got consent on that. The other thing I'll add is that we had a great event rained out last Saturday, the dedication of Edith Rockmorton Park in Kengar. It is rescheduled for this Saturday. The weather's a little dicey again, so we will stay tuned and, I think, make a call by tomorrow about whether we're going to be able to do that ribbon cutting. On Saturday, I will be out of town in New York picking up my son from college, so I'll miss it, but the chair has volunteered to fill in for me on the MC role, if the event goes on on Saturday. So, I got a bunch of pictures here I want to show you. I promise I'll not come every director's report and talk about our park activation program, but I'm so excited about it, and we're having so much success. I just want to let the pictures do the talking. We're buying a stage. We hope to get it this September. It's going to be a portable stage so that when we have big events, concerts, and venues, that we have a sound system, that we have a PA system, and we can really ramp up our ability to put on performances and shows. So, I'm very excited about getting the stage in hand. Sunset Yoga is a program that's wrapped up. You can see the dates here. The event was capped at 30. Every one of them sold out. You can see from the photos, we have great participation. People are really into it. This is at Long Branch Arless Park. Salsa in the Park's another program with another venues. We've had two have happened. We have four more coming. These get bigger crowds in the hundreds. Just some photos, North Four Corners Park. I can't tell you, for those of you who know the saga of North Four Corners Park, I cannot tell you how much this warms my heart to see community members out in that park enjoying it. This is more photos from North Four Corners Park. Here's the band at Four Corners. Acoustics and Ale is another series where we've had many events, and there's more to come. I believe there's one in Germantown coming up. Let's see, 250 to 300 people, April 22nd at Elm Street, which I attended, and then 350 to 400 at Fairview Road, just across the street from our old headquarters, which I didn't attend, but I understand the chair was there.
Yeah, and you guys know that park, right? The one right behind MRO. And I don't think I've ever seen more than five or six people in that park at one time for any reason. So, it was just amazing to see hundreds of people. And my wife and I went over there to, because we wanted to see if we could get some of it from the food truck, and the line was so long, we just gave up on it because, but that was, that's a good problem to have when you have just an overwhelming turnout for the event. It was amazing.
It is a good problem to have, and we'll just keep, you know, ramping up the number of vendors, whether it's the craft beer vendors or the food vendors, until we, you know, balance that out. You know, one of the things that, you know, the National Park and Recreation Association always touts that is not really valued enough about parks and recreation is the economic impact. And what strikes me about these, this program we didn't used to do is there's performers, whether they're musicians or performers or artists. We're giving, we're bringing in food and beer vendors, and, you know, they're maxing out their business while they're there.
Is there a way, Mr. Riley, to determine what that economic impact is? Because I think that, as part of our economic development, you know, we were always touting the Park and Planning Commission as an economic development tool, and I think this is a way to do it. So, if there's a possibility of trying to figure out what the economic development impact is on, from these park activation programs, even if it's an average or, you know, something like that, I think it would be really helpful to be able to report that to the council on a, on a regular basis.
Absolutely. We'll work on pulling something together. It's not uncommon for park districts around the country to bring in consultants to do economic impact statements for their entire system. I know the Soccer Plex on a regular basis does one just for the Germantown Soccer Plex, so there are models out there about how this is done, and we'll, we'll just look at some best practices and pull some numbers together.
That would be great. Thank you.
Absolutely. Elm, this is Elm Street where I was at. I love those little tables. It's amazing how little things make a big difference, but just those little tables wrapped in grain, people just gravitated to, you know, gather around them. Some people brought blankets. Some families were there playing chess and checkers. It was really idyllic. Here's Fairview Road, just so you know, we're not, pictures tell a story. When we say hundreds of people, we're not making it up. This is the band that I understand was extremely popular, the Crush Funk Brass Band. And then the upcoming events, let's see, May 13th, that's this weekend at Germantown.
This guy, this guy, there's one for him and one for the baby.
Yeah, I was thinking exactly that.
Crossing our fingers, the weather is good.
Still wholesome family entertainment for, at the Parks Department. Apple juice, that's right.
Spirits of the Spring, this is a smaller event, Craft Cocktail Series. I believe there's a fee to participate in this, but again, very popular. People get to learn how to do their own mixology. Photos of the participants, and then I think we have some photos of their craft here. There you go. Mint Juleps, just in time for the Kentucky Derby. Chess in the Park at Fairview, this is something new. Got a few photos of the kids who participated. Give you an idea of the volume here. Beautiful morning, and again, two, two, two days in a row, Fairview Park probably had the most people it's ever had in its history, thanks to this program. Very quickly, I think we got Parks Playhouse. This is a series both for adults and kids. An Evening of Spoken Word at Josiah Henson Museum, May 19th. This is something I'm incredibly excited about, Comedy in the Park Series. None of these have happened yet, but you can see the different themes here for events spanning from May through August. And we're going to, we had some discussion yesterday with the team about, these events are being highly promoted in multiple ways on social media, through our website, but we're going to just continue to brainstorm to make sure that all our million residents know of these events, and if they don't participate, it's just by choice, not because they didn't know about it. That's our goal. We got Park Playhouse Junior for the little ones. We've got Skate Night Series coming up, another fun event where there's going to be professional skaters at our skate parks at only Woodside across from our old headquarters and Tacoma Piney Branch Local Park, our locations where we do have skate parks. We've got Pride Movie in the Park, Friday, June 24th at Jessup Blair. And I think this is it, just the upcoming events through May and June. So, you could see, we're busy. I mean, there's events every single week. Sometimes there's multiple events on the same day, but we, you know, this is the first time, we've been doing this for about five years, and we started it out by cobbling together just staff who had certain talents and asked them to do something that they weren't doing, and they really stepped up and did it. Now, we have a dedicated team of people who have backgrounds in doing this stuff, and that's why it's amped up so much. They're very creative. They have the resources to actually staff these things. And one of the most things I've been most excited about at this program is the word continues to get out. External third-party entities are coming to us and saying, can we partner with you? And what's great, when, if they can bring resources and partner with us to help run the events, it's just really tremendous. So, thank you for indulging me in all those slides, but that's all I have this morning.
Okay, very exciting. Any comments or questions from the board?
Just that I, I think it's a great program. It's wonderful, not only the economic development impact, but it really brings attention to the Parks Department, and it brings attention to, it just increases the, or improves the living experience. People want to be here, and we're always trying to find ways to make Montgomery County more exciting, especially for, you know, for, for the next generation, because that's what we want to do. We want to bring people and make them excited to live here. So, thank you.
Okay, I think we're ready for Item 7, which is about an MOU we have with the Capitol Police. Okay, we are back to talk about an MOU with the Capitol Police with Deborah Borden, Elizabeth Adams, and Chief McWayne.
Good morning, everyone. This is Deborah Borden. For the record, I am the Deputy General Counsel for the Commission. We have developed a, an MOU for a mutual aid agreement with the United States Capitol Police. On the call today is Elizabeth Adams. She is the one who did the yeoman's work on this agreement. This agreement has been in negotiation for several months. I'd like to just say that mutual aid agreements are, are agreements, MOUs, that we take very seriously in the legal department, because there, there comes with that a level of scrutiny for indemnification issues, insurance issues, lines of control issues, who's in charge, et cetera. And so, we take very great care whenever we get a request like this, and we don't approve them all. But we have worked on this very hard. Elizabeth has done a great job, and we've worked collaboratively with both chiefs of police, because this MOU would cover both counties, both our park police in Montgomery and Prince George's Counties. Both chiefs are very happy with the agreement, and I do believe that the U.S. Capitol Police are reaching out to the regional law enforcement agencies in the area because of the events of January 6th, and because, you know, you don't work on a, on a mutual aid agreement when you're in the middle of an emergency. You do that before the emergency arises. And so, I think they're trying to get, implement some lessons learned from what happened on January 6th and get their ducks in a row. And so, we're happy to partner with them. If you have any questions, I'll just say a word about the process. We've brought it to you today as a briefing so that we can answer any questions you might have. But for a vote, it will go to the full commission because it does cover both counties on your. because it does cover both counties, on your next full commission meeting, which is next week. So, you'll see this very same agreement, MO, but along with that will be a full commission resolution where you're saying that it's okay, that it's authorized for the executive director to sign this MOU. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, and Elizabeth is also on the call. I'm sure we can answer any detailed questions you might have.
Yeah, earlier I mentioned to Mike about letting the park police know that we had dedicated a site originally Jessup Park, but I think it was moved to somewhere else in Silver Spring that recognizes the event on January 6th.
Ah, yes.
And that they, they're informed that we have that site in our county.
Yes.
Or others that you might have, yeah.
Yes, that's a great idea.
I think they would be good, they, they're aware of that, whether, that we might need some aid from them at some point.
We will make sure that they're aware of that.
Just, you know, kind of identification of who people are and this and that, and organizations might be involved.
We will make sure that they're aware of that information.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, we're very excited and really proud of our park police and the role that they, they did provide mutual assistance, I believe, during the inauguration and, and prior to that, when, when things really went sideways on January 6th, and as they have so many times before. And proud to know that they will be playing a formal role in the future for any similar events. Hopefully, that won't happen. But it's one of the peculiarities of being right here next to the Capitol of Three World. Sometimes we get called on to, to help with dealing with these kind of problems. Nowhere else in the world are you going to have that kind of situation.
So, one of the questions I have is, because I know for situations like, not in an emergency, but in other circumstances where they need the assistance, but the fact that we have our patrol on horse, and I think that's, there are not, I think it's just us and the Capitol, National Capitol Police, I'm not sure who, or the National Park Police, but it's a very unusual unit, and a special unit, that brings attention to the, to our, to our police, to the park police. And I just was wondering, does this also cover that part so that we can use this not only to assist in emergency situations, but to get us out there so that people see who we are? It gives us visibility as a very important unit of the, of the overall public safety. We have, you know, we have those special controls, and for example, it could also help bring, as, as Mr. Riley indicated in his Park Director's Report, you know, I'm not sure what the vacancies are in our police force, but hopefully, if it brings attention to us as a viable and active local police force with special kind of services, that perhaps it will attract more, you know, more recruits.
Yes. And so, the answer with respect to the MOU, it, the mounted police unit is covered by this MOU. It's specifically called out by this MOU, because as you can imagine, that is a very specialized unit that we have, and, and it is very visible, obviously. You know, the mounted units have been used, you know, for, you know, sort of crowd control, as well as, you know, in, in terms of keeping, you know, peaceful protests, peaceful. You know, when people see those, those horses, you know, they're, they're a little less likely to get too exuberant around them, you know, because they don't want to scare them, and because they're interested in them. And that really, really helps with crowd control and with, you know, these large gatherings and large events. So, they are specifically called out, and I do think that that is a, a selling point, one of the reasons probably that the U.S. Capitol Police was interested in, in, you know, partnering with us, because of our mounted unit, because we have, you know, a really strong reputation for community-based, you know, policing. And so, yeah, that's one of the reasons the, you know, the mounted unit is, is very prominent in the MOU.
So, I hope that the, when the chiefs, obviously they're on the call and they're listening, can use this as a recruitment, you know, to help us with recruitment, because I think that's also a strong area that, you know, we can get back from it as well.
It's a good point.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you very much. Like I said, you'll see this, and we'll take a vote next week.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, and it's time to take a tour.